No problem. All right. With that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. We're all appearing remotely. The meeting is being recorded. If anything goes horribly wrong tonight and we have to cancel or abort, we will continue everything left on the agenda to January 19th. First of all, is there anybody to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? We'll have an opportunity for public comment for items on the agenda, but is anyone to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? You can raise your virtual hand on Zoom or raise your actual hand on Zoom or star nine if you're on a phone. Don't see anyone at this point. I do want to say something. Received a resignation letter from Brenda Salier, who has been on the planning board for, I think, just over a year. Resigning from the planning board. I think I speak for everybody, just saying that really appreciate her service. She brought a ton of energy and a great perspective to things and she will certainly be missed. So we will be working to fill that position if anybody out there in the world listening, who's an East Hampton resident, would like to apply. I think you can probably fill out the forms on the city website. Jim?
Austin is currently an alternate for the board. Is that correct? Is he not up then to become a potential full member?
So that's all through the mayor and the city council approval. I don't, it certainly doesn't happen sort of like automatically that he fills the role he does for purposes of tonight's hearing. And until there's another member, he sits in that last full member seat. So for all intents and purposes, he will fill that void for now. Any other public comment, questions, things that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll move along. We have several sets of planning board minutes. First up is June 23rd, 2020. Planning board members get a chance to look at that.
Motion to approve minutes from that date.
I second that.
Do you want to do these in bulk, Jesse? And then we can kind of walk through them. I'll just put an open motion to approve all of them on the floor. And then we can kind of just walk through and see if anyone has any changes and approve it at the end.
I think because like some of these are ones like I missed a meeting and I think Chris missed a meeting. There's some that we can't vote on. We have to abstain. So I think we probably have to go through each one. So let's just, we'll just knock them off quick. So June 23rd looked like we had everybody present. So James has a motion to approve. Chris, did you second that?
Yep.
All right. So voting to approve the June 23rd minutes. Jim?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Next up, it looks like the August 18th minutes.
Motion to approve.
We're all present there too.
Yep, I'll second that.
All right, August 18th minutes. Jim?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Next up, October 6th.
Motion to approve the minutes from that date.
I'll second it.
Let me just double check this because one, I got my printer wasn't working. So I gotta jump between emails here to I want to make sure I don't vote on the one that I was present for. And now I can't find them.
Yeah, it's in the second email from Curtis.
Oh yeah, okay.
Yeah, I apologize for sending so many this one.
No, no, that's all right. That's a lot of minutes. All right, October 6th. And we were all present for that one. So voting in favor of October 6th. Jim?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Next up, October 20th.
Motion to approve the minutes from that date.
It's Zoe.
Hey Zoe.
I think some of these were already approved. I might be wrong though.
All right, we'll just plow through. Zoe, thanks for chiming in. I don't know, we might as well, might as well plow through anyway.
Yeah, I'll take responsibility for that one. When I was, when I was given a list to add to the agenda and I, and I went back in, some of these are novel and newly boarded by you Zoe and others of these were resting in our folder, but I wasn't certain if they'd already been approved.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
So some of them, not all of them are newly completed by you, some of which may have been previously voted. I don't know for certain. I just figured it was very approve of some of them.
All right. So this is for October 20th. It looks like Austin was the only one who missed this one.
Motion to approve the minutes from that date.
Seconded.
All right, Jim?
Aye.
Austin?
I'm staying.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. November 10th.
Motion to approve the minutes from that date.
I have an amendment to that. So there is an, on page four of six on that. There, I had a question about with this replaces one of the projects and it was replacing Womelco Way, but it's, it's in the, in the minutes, it says Amiko Way. It's just a minor edit, but just I'll second it as remended.
Excellent. All right. So to approve, what are you up to November 10th or is that, yeah?
That's November 10th, yep.
Uh, Jim?
Yay. It's also a legal thing to say according to.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Yay.
And I am a yay. All right, November 24th.
I had a quick question on this one before we approve it. So there is a note, it's on the Stepler project that it's four to five, four out of five in favor. Do we, is that our normal process that we actually just say four out of five in favor or, or should we be identifying the, the yays versus nays for the record?
Good question. I prefer the latter, I think.
I do too. I was surprised that we didn't actually identify, you know, that this, that because usually we say this person abstains, you know, abstains or this person votes no. That's just a question that I had just for procedure.
Where is it? I'm trying to pull it up there.
At the end of Stepler when we vote. It says four, four of five vote in favor.
Oh yeah, we should definitely identify who voted yea or nay. So I think Brenda was the no vote.
That's right. And I just, I think that'd be good to just make sure that's documented. I think.
Yep. I think that makes sense. Zoe, can we do that going forward?
Yep, no problem.
Motion to approve the minutes from that date with the aforementioned modification.
Seconded.
All right, voting to approve November 24th. Jim?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. And finally, December 1st.
Motion to approve the minutes from that date?
Seconded.
All right, for December 1st, Jim?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. And I'm hoping the June 23rd was one that we had already voted on because I should have abstained from that this time. So I would like to retroactively change my vote there to the extent that was happening to abstain.
Do you need a new motion for this?
No, I don't. I think that's good enough. All right. So moving right along, our first public hearing, Palmer Paving Corp applying for site plan review and special permit for accessory structure. This is an addition of accessory silo structures to support the primary industrial uses on the premises at 23 Arthur Street. Is there someone here to speak to this application?
Yes, my name is Jason Capell. I'm with Peckham and we are, we are the parent company of Palmer Paving. And it came to our attention geez, last year sometime, that there was a question over permitting of the silos that were constructed, I believe in 2012. And so we've been working with the planning board and the town or the city in general to, to come in and work with the conservation commission, do a site walkover, understand where these are relative to some natural features on site, wetland buffers and the like. They, the, the structures are outside of those buffers. We had a stormwater inspection, which addressed some questions relative to offsite discharges. And that just happened last month and we confirmed that our stormwater is retained on site. And then we came with a, we came with a permit to the city and that's where we are today. I just want to give a brief background. Peckham is a 96-year-old company. It started in Southern New York. We have holdings in Connecticut, New York, Massachusetts and Vermont. I am a professional geologist and I'm the technical services director. Kevin De Silva, I believe, is on the, on the call as well or on the meeting as well. He's our environmental manager. One thing that we've been doing, I've only, I've worked for Peckham for 15 years or so as an outside consultant. In 2018, I came on board to create an internal, an internal environmental department. And one thing we've been doing is frankly, cleaning up some of the environmental compliance work that needs to be done and making sure that we are all in order relative to permits and compliance. And so we've added quite a bit of in-house technical staff. So this is one of the projects we've been working on. Peckham, we've retained Palmer Paving as a, as an entity within Massachusetts. We ended up buying the stock. So Palmer Paving is a business entity in Massachusetts as well as JSL, John S. Lane, which we purchased last year around this time. And we, you know, we, we kept all the staff in place for the most part and business has been operating in Massachusetts as it has been. And Peckham is very happy to be in Massachusetts. And we certainly want to work with the city and resolve any of these issues.
Right. And so Mr. Capell, it looked like you guys put together a pretty comprehensive application here, which obviously the planning board members bought a chance to look at, but I'm generally assume that the public hasn't. Is there someone who can just sort of walk us through? It looks like this looked like there was a prior permit approving the use. And this probably would have been fine, except it looks like these silos exceed the height limit. So we're getting a retroactive special permit and site plan approval here. Is that, is that right Curtis?
Yeah. So it's, it's a combination of two things. It's a, per the table of use regulations, table five, that five dash one, accessory structures on industrial property need a site plan approval. And per building height section 6.8, specifically section 6.87, building height that for accessory industrial structures is allowed to exceed, exceed the maximum height established for the zone by means of a special permit of the planning board. So the, the applicant is before us tonight for both a site plan review and a special permit with the same material submitted in service of both and the same mandatory criteria from the planning board and the same findings that need to be found, except that technically the special permit has slightly like two more conditions that need to be stated.
And, and also sort of uniquely for our purposes, for a structure that's already been built and has been in use for a while.
Right.
We don't.
We have very good elevations.
So Mr. Capell, do you think you can just sort of walk us through, or, or maybe it's Mr. De Silva, sort of what's in the application and what we're talking about here specifically?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. We submitted an application. It's in two parts, special permit and, and site plan. We have a cover letter which explains who we are and a bit of the history going back to the original site plan approval by East Hampton in 1985 to the then owner, Labrie. And then we talked about some of the different applications we've applied for over time, particularly on an adjacent parcel. We had a, what's called RAP recycled asphalt product. And that area was used for the storage of recycled asphalt. We recently came to the city for a building permit, Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts has required that RAP be covered. So it remains as dry as possible, which is a very good environmental benefit. It prevents or it minimizes the amount of fuel that has to be used and it, it eliminates what we call a steam, a steam emission when the rap is introduced into the hot mix. So our cover letter describes that. It describes our history of permitting. And then it walks through the special permit approval criteria and, and how we meet that or how we respond to the approval criteria. And then as the, the letter ends, we move into a site plan which shows all the adjacent properties, the wetland buffer that I had mentioned, mentioned before.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Capell. Curtis or Jeff, is there a way to share this letter?
Yeah, I'm actually just pulling it up right now.
It's a, it's a big document, so it probably takes a minute, but I just figured it'd be helpful for people at home. Sorry, Mr. Capell.
It's available online on the city's website. I can, would you like me to, to screen share the, the file for it so people can view it in real time?
Sure.
Okay.
I also have it up if you'd like me to, to just share it. To save time, it's up to you. It looks like Curtis is already doing it. So.
So this is the formal submittal and this, and, and you were just mentioning the, this is the elevations page. And I, I refer to this one as being one of the primary site plans. It takes quite a second to load. My apologies. Because it identifies the location of a hot mix asphalt silos, which are the structure in question, which are in the front and center of the diagram here.
And Mr. Capell, can you just, like I said, I mean, I try to assume that no one, you know, watching or listening at home has, has looked at the material. So can you give us a sort of a brief overview of what these silos are and where they're located and what they're used for?
Yeah, certainly. And it may be quickly, if Curtis, you're in the center of the screen, we've got a label that says hot mixed asphalt with an arrow and a call out to the general location. You can see from the aerial, basically where our hot mixed asphalt plant is relative to our, our lot lines. We've got an office to the, to the east and, and Arthur Ave is to our, Arthur Street is to our south. And that's our main entrance way that the, the cursor is over now. But it may be better if we scroll down to the, to the photo log.
Give me just a second. The, the elevations page always takes a second to load off of whether or not I'm screen sharing. So that, is this page good?
Yeah, I think this would be great. So the, the bottom picture shows the, the batch plant on the right. In the middle, you, everybody can see that utility pole. Behind that utility pole is a black structure on an angle. That's what's called a drag slot. And then the three structures to the right are the silos. And what we do there is we make different mixes, mixed designs. Massachusetts has several different mixed designs that are required for state work. And then there's mixed designs we use for commercial and, and other private work. And when your mixed design change, changes, you might put mixed design one in the first silo, mixed design two in the middle silo, mixed design three in the third. It could be all the same mixed design. It gives us the ability to satisfy different customer needs. It gives us the about ability to satisfy different mixed design requirements for the state of Massachusetts. These silos are also insulated. And what that means is when we're running on a given Thursday or Tuesday, we can put material in the silos for the next day. And that prevents us from having to start up very early in the morning because we can keep the material overnight. It stays warm, stays at temperature. So it prevents a lot of early morning startups as well, having the silos. So as the, you know, from 1985 to present, as everybody understands, you know, requirements change, requirements become more specific for mixed designs. And the, the silos give us the flexibility to, to provide the service and the product to, to the state and to municipalities and, and private customers.
And Mr. Capell, what about either sort of leakage or anything like that from the machines, either in the form of odor or it's not really runoff, but I don't know anything else sort of coming out of it? How sealed are these as far as protecting the area around it?
They are, there is some where the drag slack goes into the top, there is an opening there where some, I will say emissions come out. That is captured under our air permit. Everything is under applicable standards. But in terms of leakage or the ability to, for something to spill, as you can imagine, you know, we're very heat sensitive. So everything is sealed. There are, everything is insulated as well. You can see the property. Thank you for going back to the map. This sits down in a, in a depression. If you look at the spot elevations and the contours around us, you can see the 154 to the south, it grades from 154 down to 142. That's a 12-foot drop in topography. To the east, it drops from 144 down to, you know, 136, 137. Oh, I'm sorry, 138. So there's a, a six-foot drop. So this is a, this is a depressed area. And, and I mean, it's just lower in topography with that statement. And if something were to spill, which it, it would not, it would be retained in this general area and not migrate offsite or, or cause a, an environmental issue. We've got a large berm you can see to the north. It's a large earthen berm. And so it truly is a little bit of a bowl that we are operating in.
Thanks. And, and maybe this is a question for Curtis. I know there's an analysis that was performed for stormwater. Does the conservation commission play any role in this or is this just our determination on that?
The, the conservation commission per the conservation agent did respond with commentary. I'll, I've run this comment by the conservation agent just to make sure it is appropriate representation of their opinion. In correspondence dated 12/30/2020, the conservation agent commented that the conservation commission did not find any issues with stormwater systems runoff or drainage on site that would require further action by the applicant. At this stage, I would say they're coming before us and then other permitting bodies as appropriate for proposed construction.
Excellent. Thanks Curtis. Any other questions from planning board members? Jim?
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah. I reviewed this whole thing and I just like to sort of bring up the, a couple of things that stood out for me. One is that the height of it is, is quite high. Personally, that's not a problem for me. The trees do block it. It's in an industrial zone. I have no issue with that. I'm not, don't plan on putting up any fuss to that because I think it's not really relevant. And these are critically critical to the, the operation of the business and I don't think it has any impact. So for me, the waiver on height is going to work. But I still am not really following the timing of the construction of these. I, I kind of get like that it was built and then, and then the regulations changed and now you're coming back before us? Or was it built without knowing the regulation? I, I'm just a little fuzzy on that still. Like what exactly, how did this get built without following the spec?
I think there's two questions there. The regulations have been changing over time. It's a, it's a continuum. For example, I'm intimately involved right now with DOT. They're changing once again their, their quality manual for, for liquids and hot mix. And, and so there's always updates. There's always changes that we're, that we're dealing with. For example, the, the change on rap that I talked about requiring the cover was relatively recent. So it seems like every year, Massachusetts, as well as most states, is always trying to improve on what they do. In 2012, when we, when these were put up, Peckham was not involved and we were, you know, we were seven years from our purchase. And quite frankly, from talking to people at Palmer, they thought, and I believe this is just to be very forthright erroneously that, or in error, that they didn't need anything because they already had site plan approval. It was an accessory use and, and I'm not sure they did the due diligence they needed to, to come to the city and go through the process probably as they should have. Any excuse for that to tell you then, other than that's what I believe happened. And so we just want to be forthright and come to the city and give you what you need and, and hopefully move forward.
Can we talk about lighting a little bit?
Sure.
Is there any change to lighting and/or signage? Those two things got brought up, I think, in a memo and I'd like to see some answers to that. Can you, is there a lighting plan?
Unfortunately, my screen, oh, here we go. Something just happened to my screen. The lighting is OSHA required. You need a certain amount of foot candles in a given area where there's a walkway, where there's a staircase, so on and so forth. The facility is OSHA compliant relative to lighting. We do have lights to prevent uplighting. So there's no, you know, there's no impact from an unshielded light or anything like that. We've tried to certainly maintain that standard. Outside of that, I can tell you the lighting is the minimum required by, by OSHA. I don't have, I, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
So there's no lighting plan. It is, I understand that you'll follow, you'll do what OSHA requires as a minimum, but right now, but the sense I get is we don't really know what that is. Is that correct?
I mean, we could certainly go identify the lights and put that on a plan for the board if that's what you would like us to do. But I do not have a plan for you at this time.
Are there lights on the silo? Silos?
If you zoom in, you can see there's a walkway on top of the silos where, where employees have to go to, to monitor and, and just, you know, fix things, do general repairs. And then you can see the three vertical lights that are around the, yeah, exactly. There's one, two, three right there. And you can see that they're shielded down. They're directional. And so they, they, they point at the staircase that goes up the drag slot and then they point around the, they point around the guide rail around the top of the three silos.
They're shielded down, but at a very high height. I forget, I don't know why I read it. It was, it's like 80 plus feet. Remind me the height of the.
It's 70. There's a, there's a detail further down in the application, gives the exact height.
It's a bit tricky. My understanding is that I, I had to, I, I, it's, it's the sum of the parts that you see on the, the left side of the screen. So I did 19 plus 51, 51.5 plus 1.5. So 53, I think it's.
53 plus 19. So we're at 72.
72, okay. So, so I mean, there are downpour chilling, but at 72 feet, I'm assuming, and I'm not sure what the lumens is of those, but they're probably pretty potent. The, the spread at the base must be pretty significant. Am I wrong about?
Yeah. Again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna guess. We could certainly investigate that. And I do know that when these are installed, there are OSHA requirements for, for foot candles at a given area. But I, I would have to get back to you on that, sir.
I, I think that realistically, my interest in that is to make sure that it's not bleeding out into the wetlands.
Sure.
We care about those peepers.
Right.
Yeah. And also, I mean, if they have OSHA requirements or other state requirements, there's not much we can do to get around that anyway. It's something they're going to have to do. So I'm personally, I feel comfortable that they're sort of complying with the state requirements for the minimum of that. Harry, you got a question?
Yeah. What exactly did the original permit ask for? When you guys came to the planning board back eight or nine, 10 years ago, what exactly did you want back then? I can't recall the silo being on it, on that. I was on the planning board back then and we were concerned about a couple of piles of gravel that were located on the right-hand side of your property because we were concerned about the, the wind blowing that gravel into that school that was over there. And you wanted to keep them covered over, but I can't even remember the silo for some reason.
Yeah. So the, the rap storage area, I believe was 2008, sir. I'm gonna just pull up here, make sure I'm, I'm accurate with that date. And then.
The plan that you provided is dated 2008.
Yeah, 2008. And then the, the silos were constructed in 12.
And the gist is that you're not part of the company that did this. So I think you're right, Harry, but this client isn't the same client.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to relate back to what I know by the original permit. That's all. I'm just curious of the way, exactly what they applied for back then. So I can kind of relate to it, you know?
Yeah. So sir, if you look at the site plan, which is on the screen, the hot mixed asphalt plant is in the middle and then to the, to the northeast, it says lands of Palmer Paving Corp. What they came to the board for in 08 was, was use of this parcel. The left-hand side of the northwestern corner is a stormwater retention feature. The middle, where you see the, the stockpile is what's called the recycled asphalt product, the rap. And then most recently, a building permit was issued for that structure that the cursor is over. And that was in response to the state of Massachusetts asking that the rap be covered. So this is the, this is the part of the property that I think you're, you are remembering.
Yeah, that, I remember going, having the, we had to walk through down there and, you know, everything else. And I know they were concerned about the school and, you know, they had to have it over and that kind of thing. Okay.
Right. And I, I believe back then there's a, the berm was installed around the, on the two sides of the property that faced the school to help with dust and make sure there was no runoff.
Yeah.
The vegetated berms, they're rather high. The vegetated berms, they're rather high. And certainly the building helps with not only precipitation on the wrap, but making sure.
Correct you, you had to, you had to plant some, some trees along that, along that line by the school, if I remember correctly.
Correct. Yep, that's correct. And actually, yeah, you can see right where the cursor is, that line of trees was planted before our, before our, my time with Peckham. But that's the area where those trees were planted.
What about the signage component of it? Is there any new signage?
There's no new signage. As far as I know, the sign was only simply changed to say an affiliate or a subsidiary of, of Peckham. But I believe it's the same sign.
And I think the question is specifically relating to the silos. So if there's, is there any like non-safety signage associated with the silos?
I'm sorry?
Is there any non, like, is there any new signage on the property that is, that specifically relates to the installation of the silos?
No, no, sir, no.
A question when you.
Chris, yeah.
Going back to stormwater, I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, you stated that this whole thing sits in a bowl.
Yes.
But the way I'm looking at your drawing, if you, if you was ever sharing screen, can scroll into the contours where the buffer zone is, it looks like there might be a typo there, which actually kind of indicates that yeah, it's in a little bit of a bowl, but it still drains towards the wetland. So my question is, if you look at the contours, you've got, right, yeah, right where you are there, it says one thirty six, then one fifty two, and then one twenty eight. That should be a one thirty two, looking at your contours. And so there is a gradual slope from your area down into the wetlands. There is no berm there from that contour. So I'm wondering if, and going back to your comment, you know, that there likely will be no, you know, runoff or any spills or anything. But in the case that it does happen, where does the stormwater go? Or where does that spill go? Does it head over to the stormwater basin that you've mentioned? Then the, in that six point seven six acre area?
So the, so you're talking six point six seven acre area. It drained into the stormwater feature, which is
Which is where?
The western side. So there actually is berm through there. I will look at the contour, but if you.
Yeah, there is, it's not shown that there is.
Yeah, but there is no drainage that, we've walked the entire thing with the Conservation Commission, with Ms. Trager and two other individuals. And there's no drainage that goes through there. That is particularly in that larger area, an area.
Chris, would you mind if I expand on that just a moment? Because I think it's a great question. There were some images that were shown of the gentleman that did the survey. It was snow covered, I think, at the time. That kind of showed those. Can we look at those?
Sure. Let me just get, bring this down to them. I think they're pretty close to the end.
I just, I'm trying, I agree that from the map, it's very hard for me to wrap my head around it. And I thought these visuals might help a bit. So is that the berm right there, that top photo?
You're looking at the, that is looking north within the stormwater feature that, it's on that six point six.
Towards the school. So that's not towards the wetlands.
That's right. The land would be to the left and north of that.
Okay. Right. So if we pull this back up. So this is a slightly different map. It doesn't have the hot mixed asphalt signage there, but it's otherwise identical. Just for my own edification, can we see where my cursor is right now? Is that the, the, the site drainage feature we're discussing?
I believe that was the subject of the last question. And you can see that little finger of, of contour that comes in from the west, just to the left of your cursor. There is, there is a, an earthen area around that. The, what you see here is, these are remnants, and we've talked about this with the Conservation Commission. All along this berm on the north side of this berm, if you go all the way to the west, there's a large finger that comes in towards the, yeah, keep going to the west, to the left. And you can see that feature right there, which kind of comes in a southerly direction towards our site. These are, are what appear to be old features that pre-development once carried a lot of water. There, they are dry at this point. There's a little bit of water on the north side of the berm, but it does not emanate from our site. We've got a series of, of curbs. And we've got a series of ponds on site that prevent runoff. And we walked pretty much, we walked the entirety of that berm with the Conservation Commission. We walked all around the stormwater feature on the six point six seven acre area. And there were, there were five of us there at the time. And we did not have water leaving the site.
So, okay, that's fair. So Klaus, can you, sorry. I say Klaus because I am working with another person named Klaus Curtis. Can you scroll into that, the, the dimension, the ninety six point eight three feet dimension between the silos and that green line?
Just going to take a second to load.
Sure. Yeah, the ninety six point eight three dimension, right, right about there in the center of your screen. So following that, that line with the arrow in each end, if a drop of water fell kind of near the silos and it went along that line, it looks to me like there isn't really anything that is impeding that flow getting between those two, between those two areas and running right through into the wetland. What, so what is there that prevents water from, from going offsite along that line?
There's significant vegetation, which is why I think that the, the topo is a little bit obscured in that area.
Okay.
Because what happens, so take your cursor, go back to the one thirty seven two two. And then go to the right, to the one fifty point oh six.
Yep. Just calibrated to the cardinal directions.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's right. So to the, so then this is a road which runs on the north side of the plant.
Yep.
And that's a paved surface with a curb all along it. And what you're looking at in that, as you go from the one fifty six to the left, so going northwest, that circular feature is a pond.
Yep.
And the, the pond has a berm on the north side. And then that berm continues around, cuts basically under the ninety six point eight three, and continues around to the, to the, to the west.
Okay.
Would it be visible in the, the pictures of the silo if I pulled those up?
I was just looking at that and I didn't, I didn't see them. But I'm, I'm trying to see if it's in the PW Grocer document.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't think we got anything down there because the photos were taken from Arthur Street.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that was what I was thinking.
But I think Chris has touched upon an error in the map essentially is what he's touched upon. There is substantial, there is substantial topo and probably five or six feet of a berm that runs along essentially right where the ninety six point eight three. And that's just an error in the map.
Yeah. So maybe, maybe there's a way to maybe get a spot elevation in there or something to show.
Yeah, we could, we could get spot elevations at the toe and the crest on, on those berms there.
While we're on the subject, Chris also pointed out that the, the elevation lines that proceed from that point to the north of the ninety six point eight three annotation, go one thirty six, one fifty two, one twenty eight. Chris, your convention was that one fifty two is probably one thirty two?
Yep, because they're two foot contours. So that's, that's just a typo. It just needs to be one thirty two. It's not one fifty two there.
But we could definitely add those spot elevations to clear that up.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, and we can photo document that area for you.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and the shrub and the brush there is, is going to be important to impede the flow too. So, I mean, that, that's helpful too, that knowing that there's brush there and there's at least a, a line there of, of a BMP that's going to stop the flow.
Sure.
Any other questions from planning board members or comments? All right. Anybody from the public with any comments or questions? Again, you can raise your virtual hand on Zoom or wave your actual hand. I see an Alfred Chamberlain with a physical hand being waved. Mr. Chamberlain, if you can give us your name and address before your comment, please.
Thank you. Alfred Chamberlain, I reside and own five Arthur Street and seven Arthur Street. There was, there was a lot of discussion with regards to the possible, possibility of leakage. And then the, there was a mention of odor, but there was no discussion on whether or not the substance has an odor, whether or not there's anything to capture odor or to prevent any kind of odor. If this is hot asphalt, I know what hot asphalt can smell like when passing it while it's being paved on the road. I'd be concerned about whether or not having, having hot asphalt in these silos and there being any leakage of an odor.
Yeah. So Mr. Capel, I think you mentioned in passing that it's, I think it's what it's a regulated point source for emissions. And so, but maybe you could talk a little bit, obviously, even when you're meeting those emission standards, is there, is there an odor in the area? I guess we have the advantage right now that it's actually been operational for years. So we don't have to surmise. You can actually tell us if there, if there's an odor or if there's any other emissions that might cause any sort of health risks or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, as I can, you know, as everybody is familiar, everybody's been around a road that's being paved. That's a different experience because you're actually laying the material out and it's all exposed to the atmosphere. Here, we try to, we try to make sure that the product is, is at the required temperature. But also when it goes into the silos, that it's put into the silos, how do I want to say this, as quickly as possible? And that the venting that is on the top of the silos remains open for as short a period as time, just enough to load. And then those features close. So to the greatest extent practicable, aside from loading, they're closed loop system. And we do operate with a, with a permit. We've got reporting requirements to the state. When there is loading, could there be a fugitive, an odor? I'm not going to say there's not. There, there is the chance for that. But we try to keep that to a minimum and then make sure that the silos are, are in a closed position. Obviously, when they get loaded into the truck, they're open on the bottom. But we try to maintain, we've got loadout times that are, any individual truck could be eleven to twenty seconds loading. So this is done as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible.
Jim, one second. I, I'm curious, Mr. Chamberlain, because you're, you seem, your address should be right across the bike path, I think, from the site right now. Is that right?
There's one, there's one lot. So I, I have five where my residence and office is located. And then seven is a vacant lot that I own. And then I believe that nine is the abutting property. So I don't, I don't actually abut the paving property, but I'm certainly close enough to smell something.
Have, have you been smelling something? Because this has been operational for years now.
I have not.
Okay. I mean, it's, we're kind of in a weird situation here, but this is actually a situation where it's kind of helpful because usually we're trying to guess what the project will smell like afterwards. But this has been operational for several years. So if it hasn't been a problem so far, and I'm actually, I'm happy to hear that it's sort of a regulated point source for exhaust. So it's governed by, you know, DEP or EPA, Mr. Capel? Uh-oh.
Jason, if you can hear us, I believe you've frozen.
I was worried it was me for a second.
Oh, okay, okay.
Am I back?
Yes.
You're back.
You always want to make sure you get frozen in a good position.
EPA has the Clean Air Act. And state of Massachusetts implements the Clean Air Act for the EPA. So our permitting is through the, through the state of Mass.
So Mr. Chamberlain, the, the state sort of governs sort of this, the health and safety of the emissions, but it doesn't necessarily govern odor as we've experienced on other projects. So I, I'm comforted to hear from you that you haven't noticed an issue with odor over the years because that tells me that there at least isn't a huge issue with that. But correct me if I'm wrong, or if you've experienced anything else with that.
I have not. I'm not. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I actually want to interrupt with some, some public comments that were just provided. And then I'm.
Hold on, I just want to make, sorry, Curtis, I just want to make sure Mr. Chamberlain's all set.
Sure, sure, sure. My apologies. Didn't mean to cut anybody off.
The only other question is, what are, what are the hours of operation with regards to using the silos and that the drag slot itself looks like it could be kind of noisy? I, I haven't really experienced any, any noise, but if it was operating in the evening, there, there could be an issue.
Well, unfortunately, we do operate in the evening when the state of Massachusetts requires it. So the state of Massachusetts, when we do state work, will look at the volume of traffic on a particular road. And if there are certain thresholds, it kicks the paving operation into a nighttime operation.
Okay. Mr. Chamberlain, have you noticed issues with sound or, or night sound during your time there?
Occasionally, I will hear loud bang.
Women will, I mistake.
Noises that sound mechanical. It, it sounds to me more like maybe something that's crushing rock. I don't know if you have anything like that on site. But nothing, nothing that's like a continuing operation where, where it's running and running and running for long periods of time. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, certainly if you come across that.
Jason, you've frozen again.
I, I mean, if we can get a complaint, we get it in real time, then we can go back and understand what the operation is doing at that time. Unfortunately, with, with the way the state of Massachusetts and New York and a lot of other states mandate nighttime paving, we do end up running at night on occasion. Now, on those situations, we will try to load the silos in normal business hours and then just load the trucks out at night. If it's a particularly large job, we may have to run the, the facility at night as well to satisfy the, the demands of the paving project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain.
Thank you.
Harry, one second. I want to take Lindsay Alterkin. I'm sure I'm butchering that name.
That's fine. Lindsay Alterkin, I live in the Mountain View condos. And I do hear sound often from this property. A lot of times I notice it around like two in the morning, four in the morning, I hear screeching sounds. I don't want to like try to make the sound, but I do hear it. And I was wondering if there's maybe a way that they can better insulate these silos, do something or, you know, to.
Yeah, it's, it's, the silos are, the, the silos are static, except for when the drag slot is filling those. I mean, they open at the bottom. But other than that, they're not a moving mechanical part. They're, they're not a bell. Aside from the drag slot, when they are active, I would like to say is we've, you know, we, we've been very responsive to, to complaints in the past. Sometimes we've, we've been able to go into facilities and the type of backup alarm we use to make them, there's what are called white noise backup alarms. And so I don't want to dismiss anybody's comment here, but I would really like to generate a real time log of what we're talking about. So then we can find out what, what on the facility may be, may be causing that. If there's a bad bearing or something like that, our, our mechanics are always trained to look for wear items. Because sometimes. Test where, take these comments and talk to the, the facility.
So can you provide a phone number to provide complaints?
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, I can give it right now.
I'm ready.
My cell phone is five one eight.
Five one eight?
Two six five.
Mm-hmm.
One one two six.
Okay. Five one eight, two six five, one one two six.
That's my cell phone.
And is that, is that the best number, Mr. Capel, to make a noise complaint? Or is there a better number?
Two thirty in the morning.
Yeah, no, for the role I play and, and the role Kevin plays, that's what we do. So certainly we are willing to talk to anybody at any time and, and make sure that we're having as little footprint on the community as possible.
I appreciate that. And I can guarantee you will be hearing from me if I hear from you.
Yeah, no problem. I, I even challenge you to try and record the noise for us.
I will. I definitely.
Yeah, because that way we can probably better identify it if we can hear it.
I wish I, I just don't want to sound like an idiot by trying to imitate the sound, but it's like a screeching sound that I hear.
You know, that's not ringing something where I could say, oh, that's, you know, you know, a feed door or anything like that. I just don't know.
I don't know. Well, I'll record it and I will call you and let you know when it's happening.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
All right, Harry, you had a question?
Yeah, well, listen at the more trucks coming in and out of there, or about the same.
No, sir, the this has no impact on the contracts that, you know, are let by the state or or, you know, the state of the economy and how much paving is going on. It just enables us to. Of the state, their mix.
This time is truly.
We lost you there again, Jason, for a minute.
Yeah, I'm going to have to tell my kids to all get off the wifi. But if I'm back, I will, I will say that, you know, our, what we sell is market driven, market demand. And so having si- storage silos doesn't doesn't enable us to sell more material to the state or commercial clients.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions from the public or the planning board, Curtis, yep?
So we got two public comments in the chat, and just before I go into these, I ask, I recognize that one of these was driven by a technological difficulty. So, you know, obviously, that's fine, but we asked that people generally refrain from using the chat during these meetings. So the first question is, was the Dunkin' Donuts location already discussed? Obviously, it has not been. Second question is from Renate, forgive me for mispronouncing your name. And could you give your last name for the record as well? While while I wait for that potentially in chat, I'll I'll provide the message verbatim. Hi, sorry, my camera does not work. Does Palmer Paving plan to increase slash add the number of trucks with the addition of the silo structures? I live in Mountain View condos behind Palmer Paving, and my unit is negatively impacted with trucks coming from Ferry and stopping at East Street, then turning left onto East Street. Thank you, Renate, twenty eleven East Street. So.
So I'll I'll just reiterate that this has no impact on the on the 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 contracts that are available on any given year.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions from the public or the board? Again, you can raise your hand on Zoom, you can raise your physical hand for the camera. If you're calling in, you can press star nine, which should raise a hand. And in a pinch, you can unmute yourself and ask to address the board and the applicant. And I don't see anything at this point. So, Jim, yes?
This is if you're done with public comments.
It looks like we are.
Okay, I wanted to just kind of make two points. When I've been reviewing here in the background, my earlier point about lighting, and I I tend to agree with you, Jesse, after I looking at that map, I think I'm going to be okay with the lighting based on the kinds of distances I'm looking at. I don't think I personally, maybe the rest of the board disagrees, will require a lighting plan. And I mentioned earlier that sort of the big thing here is we're essentially wavering the height. And then we might want to have brief discussion about that unless no one else has objection, I don't object, I think it's fine.
Well, it sounds like we do need, we're going to have to have a revised contour plan to show that drainage issue. So we we certainly can have a discussion about the height. I mean, I I tend to agree with you, James, personally, that, you know, the height itself is not a problem. It's more about what the impacts of that height are, and it looks like, based on what we've addressed so far, it's not much of an impact on on what's been going on. But I'm happy to, again, take more comments or questions from either board members or the public regarding specifically the height of the silos, if they think there's issues related to that. And I see nothing. So I I guess, Jason, I guess the question really is if we if to get the revised contours, how much time do you think you would need to get that done without either making you do something crazy, but also not slowing this down too much?
I'm thinking I can get it to you the end of the week.
Okay, so our our next hearing will be January nineteenth, which is two weeks. Does that seem doable for you and Mr. De Silva to return for that and and review a revised plan?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. I I echo Jason in saying that we should be able to get that to you, no problem, by the end of the week.
Okay, so unless unless there's planning board members or planning department that would object to the January nineteenth continuance, I think that probably makes sense. We can at least confirm that this is, you know, it looks on the ground, the way we're being told. And and then tie a ball on this one on the nineteenth, if that's all smooth.
Which, what time would that be on the nineteenth, first item, second item, six, six thirty?
Curtis, is there anything on for the nineteenth that we need to plan around, or is everything just on at six right now?
There will be one thing already on the agenda, let me just pull it up. We got a submittal for a a fitness center use at the at a the sublease location at the Obeshaun Hardware.
Okay, so I mean, I guess.
Six thirty.
That's the question is, do we do that, or do we just have them come at six and have them sit around instead of us not? I mean, this may not go, I don't know what's going to happen.
I suspect with everything else done, this will be pretty quick if the contour.
We'll also have the new marijuana company, the the High Five Inc. at nineteen Wilmalk Way.
You do it first.
You want to do this first, Jim?
Yeah, because it'll just get out of the way.
Continue this to to six o'clock, and we could put that first on the agenda, and hopefully it'll be a quick one.
I motion to continue the special permit for Palmer Paving to the January nineteenth at six o'clock.
Seconded.
All right, to continue this to January nineteenth at six, Jim?
Hi.
Austin?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I. All right, folks, so we'll see you back here on the nineteenth at six.
Yes, Curtis, revised map, electronic and then too hard?
Yeah, and I can receive them physically in the the parking lot behind Sea Hall. While we're still discussing the subject, the board discussed the revised map, and and then I know Kevin offered photographs of that area. Is is that the summary of the things that the board is looking for here?
I think that's all we we raised as issues, yeah, just sort of confirmation about that sort of stormwater drainage concern in that back section especially.
Perfect, all right, I just wanted to make sure that I was okay there, I'll take two physical copies whenever you're all set and the rest by digital.
Perfect, all right, Jason, Kevin, thanks so much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, everybody, bye bye.
Thank you, bye bye.
All right, and the next item on the agenda I am going to recuse myself from. So, Jim, I'm just going to turn off my video and mute myself, and someone can just give a holler when they're done. I will not leave my desktop here.
All right, our next item up is.
Very quiet.
Special perm, am I muted? No?
You're just quiet for a while suddenly. Now you're muted. Nope.
How about now?
So your your volume is on, but it's still very quiet for me, is it?
I don't know why that happened suddenly.
Yeah, weird.
As loud as I can. Our next agenda items, High Five Inc. seeking a special permit at nineteen Wilmalk Way. I have a note here that they're requesting a continuance to January nineteenth, is the applicant here to discuss the?
No, so and and I can provide commentary on this as planning says, this is Curtis, we an assistant planner to the planning department. So I received a an email and then a call from the project proponent in which he explicitly laid out that he was not going to be able to make this meeting tonight as he's, I believe, touching down for a mandatory business meeting on the West Coast right now. We tried to work out a solution that would allow him to call in from the plane, but the simple fact of the matter is, it it wouldn't be enough to make sure that he could sustain a Zoom call connection. So with, he he just asked for a continuance by the sufferance of the board. I wanted to keep it on tonight's agenda to make sure that those members of the public who are attending per the newspaper ad or per the abutter's notification know when this is being continued to and are able to attend that meeting as well. James, zero percent able to hear you now, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I don't know what's going on, normal or low volume?
Low still.
Okay, so I had hoped that they would be here, whatever reason, we could do the continuance. But I wanted to lay out a few items that I saw that they might be able to prepare for, take advantage of this time. If you can hear me, and maybe if they watch this video, or if you can get this information to them, Curtis.
Sure.
One was that we did a permit already, and I'm several of these board members, Harry, Jesse not here, but Chris will remember in this area. And we had some findings and discussions in that that I think will be very useful. Specifically, I remember Chris talking about access to the bike trail in the back of the building. We talked about the Batumina surface, drainage, parking, all that stuff. I think leveraging that discussion, again, would be really helpful. So if we could link that old finding to the planning board, and and I think that would be really helpful in our meeting on the nineteenth, if we agree to extend it. And also, I'd like to just make the comment that the application overall looked real thin to me. And if the if the applicant is having some time before the nineteenth to come back, I'm not going to stay anymore because we're not having a meeting, but here's an opportunity to to look. Now, with regard to continuing this to the nineteenth, based on the reason that you said, I'm okay with that, obviously, we don't do too many of these. Does anyone else on the board have an issue with continuing?
No.
No? Okay. Who wants to be the motion maker, Chris?
I'll make a motion to continue High Five Inc. seeking a special permit under section ten point ten and twelve point nine to operate a cannabis cultivator, cannabis production manufacturer at nineteen Wilmalk Way to January nineteenth at six P M, six oh five P M, if you want to do that.
Oh, seconded.
All in favor, Austin?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
All right, thank you, and if you can hear me, Jesse, it was a short.
And while he's coming back, I just want to repeat back to you what you what, so my intention would be then to communicate with the applicant and make sure that they're aware of some of the issues that you raised tonight as part of the continuance. Your specific things you wanted to mention were, per the previous special permit on the property, there was ongoing discussion of bike trail access. You want to know whether the applicant is expanding on that or continuing that, and whether they have basically any other details that they're adding to the site plan?
For site plan, yep. Lighting, drainage, paving, all of that that we discussed at the last meeting, at when the last special permit.
Going to come up again, and it's going to be useful for both the board and for them to review.
Absolutely.
All right.
There he is.
So, next up on the agenda, we have new business. I'm going to set aside the election for chair and vice chair till later, I think, and we'll move on to our more substantive stuff first. So the next thing on new business would be review and discussion of proposed Holyoke Dunkin' Donuts at five hundred East Hampton Road. So I don't know, planning department have something about that?
Sure, I'll I'll speak to this briefly, you know, as a part of chapter forty A, adjacent towns get notified in the mail of hearings. And in the past, we we get these very frequently, we get them from Northampton, some from Holyoke, West Hampton, and Southampton. And in my tenure, which is relatively short, in the past three years, we've never really sent any to the planning board. Anyway, I look at them and and many of them just don't seem significant. And and we have this one, which is a proposal for the for Dunkin' Donuts at the Log Cabin site, the Mountain Joe portion of that. And I just didn't want to make a sole decision that it was or was not important for the planning board to see this. And so the statute reads that, you know, the planning boards of abutting towns are notified of the hearing. And it it creates an opportunity for boards to review projects and then potentially decide to, you know, chime in or not on projects. And so it's been a little bit of a mixed procedure here, and I I thought this was an opportunity to raise it, raise it to the board and figure out if the board has a solid position. And I think previously, there had been sort of some discussion that, you know, it's not something that this board chooses to do. I just wanted to make sure this was a project that I didn't want to have the sole responsibility for deciding, so.
So, James, Jeff and I talked about this, because, you know, typically, I I sort of analogize this to, you know, when we get asked to comment on zoning board applications, and we've sort of agreed as a group that we're not going to second guess or substitute our judgment. And we've sort of taken that position in the past with abutting town projects. But this did seem like a bigger one, and also seemed like we've had some new members, we wanted to discuss it again. And I tend to, you know, we actually got a really nice letter from the Holyoke Planning Board about our own Duncan project earlier this year, which I think was helpful. I I tend to think that most of these boards are going to look at all the same things we would, and that it sort of duplicates efforts to do that. But I think that maybe for bigger projects like this, you know, I do think there's some people from the public here tonight, and I'd be curious to hear comments and at least see, I mean, personally, I'd be thinking if there's things that maybe the Holyoke Planning Board wouldn't have thought of or heard of or or been, you know, wouldn't have been addressed, to see if it's worth us commenting or writing a letter or something in that sense. But my my general thought all along, I think we've sort of assumed that those boards will receive their own public comments and address all the same concerns that we would, but they don't want to miss a chance. Certainly for something like this, which is, you know, at the top of Mount Tom, and I think will have a big impact on East Hampton, to see if there's people that have comments or questions and at least raise some concerns. And then we can, I I guess, once we hear what people have to say, we can decide whether we want to take action or whether we simply want to say those are great points and you should address them at the Holyoke Planning Board meeting. But that that would be my impulse unless anybody feels differently about it at this point. So I guess to that end, is there anyone here who has any comments or or would like to raise any concerns? I can I can imagine some concerns that people might have and just and raise them with us, then we can see if it's somebody on the planning board is going to insert herself into or maybe just redirect people. And again, you can either raise your Zoom hand or raise your real hand on camera or star nine on a phone. Or if you want to just unmute yourself and ask to address the board, that works too. Sorry, Austin, yep?
Jesse, I wasn't sure if you had mentioned the, in new business, the five hundred East Hampton Road address in this meeting?
I thought I did, but maybe not, yeah, so the five hundred East Hampton Road is the Mount Tom address up at the top there. I think it's by that, up by the Log Cabin, Delaney House, or, you know, Log Cabin and Tavern on the Hill, that area there. So any comments or questions from the public? Nobody, oh.
I don't have a technical comment about. Plan, oh, I'm Nina Levinson, I live at H Chapman.
Thank you.
I don't have a comment about, I guess, about technical planning procedure. I just came because it does, it feels not good to me to have a Dunkin' Donuts on top of Mount Tom in terms of what East Hampton is trying to promote. It just doesn't feel like we need another Dunkin' Donuts right there. If people get off ninety one, they could go into Holyoke for Dunkin' Donuts. And, yeah, so I would be curious about when the Holyoke Planning Meeting is around that. And also, if there's any, like, supportive, I just, if they would just be looking for comments from a planning perspective or, and if East, I know that they sent this out to the town of East Hampton, so I'm wondering if East, like, if if we were to generate a bunch of comments from East Hampton, if that would have, and if you would think that would have an impact?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I don't know if you've been to any of our planning board hearings before for similar projects like this, but I would assume not. I mean, there, we we do this regularly, and if it doesn't sort of bump up against people, they're often not here. So, you know, we typically, as you just sort of saw us go through with the Palmer Paving application, but, you know, this would be a much bigger project, a commercial business, the top of Mount Tom. You know, presumably, if we did this, and I can only assume Holyoke Planning Board would do the same thing, there would be traffic studies, there would be stormwater analysis, there would be all of that, including just sort of neighbors and residents who, I assume, some would show up and say, I would love to have a Dunkin' on my commute, and others would say, I don't want a Dunkin' anywhere in town, we have enough of them, as we faced when we had our own Dunkin' applicant here just this summer. So I I think, I mean, like I said, my inclination is that, and I don't know, Jeff, if we have an actual date and time for the Holyoke Planning Board hearing, but my inclination would be that I I would certainly encourage you to find that date and time, or maybe we can help you so that you can chime in at that. I mean, I really think the only value we could offer by sending a letter or something is if there's something that's sort of unique to the East Hampton side of things, which, as I said, I I tend to think that, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, it's probably going to hit East Hampton the same way it hits Holyoke, just that it's going to add the same issues with congestion and traffic and all that, and commercialization at the top of Mount Tom, and, you know, any number of things like. And commercialization at the top of Mount Tom and, you know, any number of things like that. So I'm not sure that we would add much as a board to that discussion. But I'm curious to hear if other people have other things tonight that are a little more unique. Because I can envision something that would be, you know, in a blind spot for somewhere like Holyoke that we might be able to chime in on. But I certainly think it's worthwhile for neighboring communities. Holyoke is obligated under state law to give us notice for this kind of a project because it abuts us. And so they send us this notice. But I'm sure that they will be hearing from people in and out of town when this actually shows up for their hearing. Do we have a date yet, Curtis or Jeff for the?
Yeah, Nina, in answer to your question about the date, I believe the Holyoke Planning, the Holyoke Planning Board is hearing it on the 20, on the 24th of this month, on January, Tuesday, January 24th. I think their meeting started at 5:30. For more information, you can always call their planning department at 413-322-5575. I believe there's another member of the public who might have comment and she may be more eminently able to provide commentary on the Holyoke Planning Board than I am.
Yeah, and Kurt, just, just to clarify, the 24th of January is a Sunday, I think.
Well, I don't know anything.
But I doubt that's when it is.
26th, 26th, try again.
That sounds better.
Tried so hard.
Alright, Mimi Panich?
Yes, thank you. I hope that I can at least shine a little bit of light on this. You know, obviously, we don't want to ask you to duplicate what the Holyoke Planning Board is already going to be doing. And I should add here, I'm speaking for myself as a member, not for the planning board as a whole.
Oh, excellent.
But, you know, I think from our point of view, certainly from mine, you know, I would be concerned about whatever issues might specifically affect East Hampton that we wouldn't necessarily know about. You know, just from off the top of my head, for instance, changes to the lighting at the top of the mountain. You know, that's going to shine into the valley and we won't necessarily know about it. And, you know, anything like that, that your residents are likely to be impacted by. We obviously are going to be paying meticulous attention to the traffic because, you know, that's a big deal. We don't really have jurisdiction to say, well, we just don't want commercialization up there. But, you know, there are obvious issues about the aesthetics and about the wildlife. And to the extent that you all know any of it, it's helpful. And, you know, we certainly would welcome anybody from East Hampton who wants to comment in our proceedings. The other thing that it might be useful for you all to know is that the city council has to issue the permits for the drive-through facility that they're seeking for this project. That is a separate set of hearings from ours. And I believe that the first iteration of that is before our committee on development and governmental relations. And that's happening, I believe, the 25th of this month. Let me just look at the calendar. Yeah, I think that's Monday, the 25th, that it is now on their agenda. So we'll try to keep you all notified of all of these dates. I'm sure there are going to be rather a lot of them. But, you know, certainly, to the extent that you all want to chime in, you are more than welcome. And that's really it.
That's great, Mimi, thanks so much. It's really nice to have you come and explain that to us. I think that's really helpful.
You know, we appreciate the work you guys are doing, generally speaking. Plus, it's fun to get to sit and lurk in the audience.
Well, good, likewise. Jim, comment, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mimi. It's fantastic to have you here and we appreciate the other letter we received from the Duncan Committee. Jesse, I found your comments to Nina, forgive me, I can't quite see the name. Nina Levinson's question. I wanted to add that we're in general fairly politically agnostic. That's how we maintain our respectability. We are adjudicators of a finite set of rules in our zoning. I believe Mimi kind of alluded to this with regard to her comment about commercialization. Whether we like Duncan or not, really shouldn't and doesn't enter into our equation for the only one we had. I'm sure it's true with our planning board. We're following a set of guidelines. So it's really not something we're looking at in terms of, you know, the quality of the business. It's really more about safety and all the other things that we go through in our zoning list. And I just wanted to make that comment. And to you, Mimi, and Jesse's comment that we just trust them with this. I completely agree. Your comments about traffic, which would clearly be at the very top of my list in this discussion and was in our Duncan project as well. You've absolutely got a handle on, and I think you've got this.
Yeah, well, but anything that you notice us not picking up on because we're not there? For heaven's sake, tell us, we want to hear it.
Alright, that's excellent. Nina, do you have your hand up? Oh, Harry?
You know, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. The place is, it's been, uh, Mountain Joe's has been there for how long? How long have they been in business?
I don't know, several years.
It's already been commercialized up there. They've had, they've had a copy place up there for what, four, five years, if not longer?
Yeah, I think, I think Mimi's point is a good one, that like, commercialization of the top of the mountain on itself is not the consideration, right? It's the impact on traffic and lighting and wildlife. And so there may be something that has a more of an impact, more of a footprint up there than what's currently there. And, I mean, I haven't seen the plans, I don't, I don't know anything that's proposed. But I can imagine it will be more significant than what's currently up there at Mountain Joe's. But, yeah, I think, I think the sort of broader philosophical concerns are way above our planning board pay grade here. And we sort of have to apply the zoning rules. But it's a fair point, Harry.
Well, you're not, you're not impacting any neighborhood, it's for traffic. I mean, traffic is what it is. And it's not like down on E Street in East Hampton where you have all the homeowners down there, there's no homeowners up there.
Well, just be grateful, Harry, that we're not the ones that have to actually vote on this one.
Well, I wouldn't mind it at all, to be honest with you.
So I would encourage, yeah, Nina?
I will say there are homeowners within a, like, mile and a half of that site. So I think it, I mean, Holyoke will conduct the traffic assessment and I guess they'll see. But I am also curious, like, would their traffic assessment assess the traffic of Mount Tom down into East Hampton? Or would it only assess the traffic within the jurisdiction of Holyoke?
The zoning ordinances of the city of Holyoke do specifically call out as both part of the traffic impact statement or traffic study. And I want to say this one's going to be mandatorily obliged to a traffic study. It'll include how many trips are going in each direction from which someone could conceivably enter or exit the site. So what you'll end up with hypothetically is you'll get like a little. Here, I'm going to do it in a camera, a portion of the site, road. And then it'll have arrows being, okay, this is how many cars are going to pull out of the site going this way, north towards East Hampton. This is how many cars are going to go south towards Holyoke. And, and this is how many cars are going to turn off the road coming north from, from Holyoke. This is how many cars are going to come, coming south from East Hampton, based on estimations from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE. That'll be all subject to the review with the City of Holyoke's Planning Department especially. I know we've mentioned two different bodies, the development, the development and government relations of the city council. The planning board meetings, which are the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. And Tuesday, the 26th, not the 24th. Is going to be the, where they're going to be discussing that, I think.
But, but Nina, also, a lot of that is sort of subjective and it depends on how it unfolds at a hearing. So, you know, for our own Duncan project this fall, the initial traffic report that we received or the traffic study, you know, we, we got a third-party peer reviewer to look at it. They came back and told us some shortcomings with the traffic study. So, you know, I really would encourage you to feel free to go to the Holyoke Planning Board meetings and raise that. If there's, if you think there's sort of holes in the traffic study that's presented or the analysis, feel free to raise that and see what happens.
And that number that I provided earlier, the 322-55751, that'll take you to the staff, the equivalence of myself over there. And they'll be able to forward you copies of the plans and answer any specific questions in regards to those.
So convenient to have an assistant city planner who was formerly in Holyoke Planning Department for all these questions, timely.
Do you mind if I ask, Mimi, how many, how many members are on your planning board?
You're five of us.
Five, okay, same as us.
Alright, any other comments or questions from either planning board or the public regarding this?
Do you need some sort of motion that there's no comment, that we're providing no official comment?
I don't think we need to take an action at all. I mean, unless somebody wants to, but I think that we can, we've heard some public comment. I don't think it rises to the level where we can provide insight at this point. But maybe something will come up once the hearings start. Mimi, best of luck, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Hope to get to see you again.
For having me.
Regards to everybody.
Will do. Night, folks.
Thank you. Alright, so next up is review and discussion of the draft, draft housing production plan.
Great, thank you. So the board should have received a transmittal of our work in progress. So housing production plan is our document for East Hampton that's going to guide our affordable housing development for the next seven years. And what I had asked for was any initial planning board input on the draft report. And hopefully in the transmittal, it was clear that as part of the approval process, it's a, it needs to be adopted by both the planning board and city council. Originally, we had a little bit tighter timeline established. And it has since kind of loosened up a little bit. And as of right now, the hope is that we could convene the planning board and the city council together during one of the city council meetings. And the date that kind of got pegged right now was Wednesday, February 17th. I don't know if that bell just went off when I was saying Wednesday's, February 17th. I did confirm with, with Jesse at the beginning that he would be available. And I wanted to ask, at least initially, if that date would be available to planning board members to join the city council. The goal is for our consultant to give a relatively brief presentation of the plan. And we have another committee in town called the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. And so they have been a key, a key driver of the plan. They've reviewed several drafts of it. So we would expect the chairperson of that committee to say something in favor of adopting the report. And then the other committee that's also been involved is the EDIC. So that's the Economic Development and Industrial Commission. And also since I, since day one, attending their meetings, you know, they were pretty keen to identify that the connection between housing and economic development. And they're interconnected and related. And so what they are interested, they will speak also, I believe, in favor of adopting the report. And so that's the overarching goal, is to convene on February 17th and have the city council take a vote and have the planning board take a vote to adopt the plan. And I am very happy right now to try to field any questions. Curtis had to jump off, he and I spoke of this before, so he just left. I am co-host now. If you had any initial questions now, I'm very interested to see if I can field them. And then, you know, the goal would really to be prepared to have that vote on February 17th. And then just one more tidbit is through the city council process, it's been introduced to city council and it's been referred to their property subcommittee. And so they're meeting next week and will review and potentially ask questions in preparation for getting the final document and voting on it. So I'll yield and just see if you guys have any questions or anything I can answer.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm just going to blow a smoke for like 20 seconds. No questions, I thought it was really well drafted and I look forward to attending. I think that was less than 20.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I mean, I don't, I didn't have any questions, I thought it was a really comprehensive plan. It's one of those things where you look at it and, you know, maybe it's only people that are in other boards and other public service and things like that, where you look at it and just think the hours that went into preparing that. But I thought it was really well done. So I, I, I assume Austin, Jim, Harry, Chris, you guys can be there on the 17th?
Yep, 17th works for me. I also agree that it was an excellent, excellent document.
And we all just keep every night open for meetings at this point anyway, right?
Including Sundays, apparently.
I think that's helpful and I appreciate it. I mean, I think it's going to be an important document. It's, you know, we have, we have needs for housing. And if you got into the, if you got to the portion that's the action items, you know, there will be some zoning amendments that will go through the joint process to, to see if there are things we can do to the zoning to make it presumably easier to develop more housing in East Hampton. And I know that there are some city councils who are very eager to start pursuing that. And I'll just preview that, one of, one of the, one of the first things that I believe will come forward is accessory dwelling units. So it's basically a small accessory apartment. And we do allow them right now. But one of the goals and one of the observations coming out of the plan is to try to make them by right. So that a person could, if they meet the basic criteria, they could apply for a building permit. So it'll take some time to set up the criteria. But it'll be a process that would involve the planning board and, and the ordinance subcommittee to formulate that.
That'd be really good.
Right, and, and I think it's one of the common ways, commonly relatively easy ways that we can produce, you know, a modest number of new housing units, so.
When I'm out in public and it comes out that I'm on the planning board, which I try to hide. That is the most common thing that people bring up to me about things they want to deal with. It's usually, you know, their mother-in-law is moving and our father-in-law and it's too restrictive and it really bugs people, we definitely need to do something about it.
Yeah, and we did, we did add the accessory dwelling units, I don't know what, five years ago? I'm horrible at gauging our time, but I think that there probably could be fewer hurdles to that process. And I'm sure that, that will lead to some of those four-hour hearings we were talking about, but that's good. We never want to draft this stuff in a vacuum, so we'll see.
Great.
I think that sounds great, Jeff. So I guess we'll wait and then in advance, I mean, it seemed like what we received was at least technically a draft plan? Or is that the final version that will be presented on the 17th?
I believe that there'll be some minor edits at this point. We heard, we had a meeting this morning and I heard about some like grammatical or just spelling errors. And so I am, I am waiting for input from the Housing Partnership and then the Property Subcommittee. So if anything of substance comes out of that, there will be one more version. And I will try to, I'll try to articulate what has changed from the first draft that you guys all reviewed. But at this point, I don't expect big, significant changes. It's been, that was pretty well-betted to get to that point.
Excellent, alright, we'll, we'll await that news.
Great. Alright, and then if the next thing is the Open Space and Recreation Plan. So it's a similarly large kind of planning initiative that we have moved pretty far along. And originally, the goal was to give a draft of the Open Space Plan today, but it's just, just with the holidays, not quite ready. So I suspect that by early next week, I will transmit a copy of the draft Open Space and Recreation Plan, excuse me, to the planning board. And it's kind of terrible. I, I can't remember off the top of my head at the moment, but I, I believe that the planning board also needs to make, I guess the action is to submit, prepare and submit a letter of support in favor of the plan. I have to refine that because I totally, it's totally just left my mind what the process is.
But so it's not a joint hearing, it's something that, it's, it's more like our 121A report kind of thing where we say we endorse this and support the contents, but then we don't go to a city council meeting.
Correct, it doesn't involve the joint, yeah, thank you, Jesse. And it's to the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So they need to see that the planning board and Conservation Commission are the key sign-offs. And then the city council, we're going to send it to some other boards and committees to get a letter of support for the plan to go in. And what we're about to embark on is like a 30-day public review period. So my goal has been to transmit it to the planning board and the other key boards. But then we're also offering, you know, the opportunity for public comment on the plan. And then we'll have a, we'll have one final community meeting at the end of January. And then the plan will be ready to be submitted. The interesting thing here for the planning board, it's, it's not for naught. Brenda was on the steering committee and had participated quite a lot. But as you will see, there are action items listed in that plan that are the comparable comparison. It's the balance between protecting open space and undeveloped land. And what the housing production plan says is we need to build more housing. And so there will be these sort of competing discussions happening over the next couple of years. Where some of the zoning that we have for Mount Tom or the Ridge Line or other key areas, you know, we might need to make our zoning more protective of certain areas and more liberal for, for other areas. And so the planning board will be involved in those discussions as well, so as you.
But it's, it's perfect, Jeff, that it's coming up at the same time. But it's, it's perfect, Jeff, that it's coming up at the same time, right? The last thing we want to do is create a housing plan, and then two years from now, try to backpedal and protect open space. So we might as well be looking at all this at once.
Yeah. And the third part of it is the downtown plan, which got finished last year. So, so that really, if you've seen that yet, and I can transmit that back out at some point, but that really says, we should really be focusing as much as we can on development in the downtown. We have some other areas. But with the three plans combined, it gives us sort of the lay of the land of what we need to be looking at for the next couple of years. So that was definitely by design.
Is that steering committee still operational?
It is.
Was that, I, I, you mentioned that ex-member Salier was a big part of it. And I remember that, that she, you know, she had, was bringing to us some input about it and asked some questions, which is excellent. I, I don't know, and I, I have to be careful with this, but what, did we send her as a member of the Planning Board? Does she do that independently? And what I'm trying to get to is, is there, do we need to reappoint a member or?
Good point. It's not required. It was, it was always intended to be an ad hoc committee. I think that I brought it to the whole group. I know that I reached out to a couple of people. I think, I, I don't remember. I, I hope that I brought it to the whole group, and Brenda was one that said she was very interested and, and willing to participate. The idea was more that there could be a member of the Planning Board who could report out occasionally on the progress. And so since we are at the final leg, I don't think, you know, there's no requirement to have that filled at this point. If it were earlier in the process, I would probably ask, you know, to see if someone wanted to participate. But at, at this point, you're going to see the final draft. We're going to have a final community meeting, and then it really is almost at its conclusion.
And you expect that that committee will wrap up and close?
Yeah, yeah. And, yep, unless we form a separate or new, like, implementation committee, but that would be, that would be a ways from now.
Okay, great.
Excellent. This all sounds great. All right, so we'll wait to see a final version of that, and then we'll have a hearing and, and we'll figure out, we'll pin down exactly what the process is to approve or recommend or refer or what have you.
Yes, thank you, yep.
The city council meeting, when, on the 17th of February, what time does it start?
I believe that I did communicate with the city council president, and I think we're going to peg it right at 6:15, the first item, because it, it's so far out that we were able to position it first. So that's my, my understanding of that.
I'll do six so I actually show up on time.
Oh, they get special treatment, Chris?
Yeah. The council, I mean.
All right, excellent. And our final matter here is voting on chair and vice chair.
I nominate myself as vice chair, so that I don't have to worry about chair.
You're breaking with the rule of not nominating yourself just to not nominate yourself as chair?
Get this out of the way.
I, I will say what I always say. I am happy to continue to do this, and I'm happy to continue to step aside and let someone else do it. But that is completely up to the rest of the group.
I nominate Jesse and James as chair and vice chair.
I second any of those, all of those.
All right, I guess we're going as a slate again. So this will be to approve Mia's chair and Jim's vice chair, preferably with better volume on his speaker than he had tonight when he had to act as chair, but. All in favor? Jim?
Yay.
Austin?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
Yay!
I'm only going with an I. I'm not quite willing to yay about this, but I will vote for it. All right, another year in the books and another year started. I, I did just want to say, just as a quick thing, this was, I mean, this is already an arduous, you can't quite say job since it's volunteer, but it's a lot of work being on the Planning Board. And this year was like the previous 10 years combined, I think, for Jim and I. And I, I mean, I, I don't think any of us missed more than one or two meetings, and we were meeting every week for a while. So, I mean, I really wanted to thank all you, and Brenda. I thanked her on the side for this, but, I mean, it, it's remarkable. And it, this is hard enough when we're all here, but if people are missing and we can't do it, it's even harder, so.
I can't believe I actually thought we should have, like, what did I say, like, 12 cannabis establishments or something when we first started out?
It's a lot different when you have to be on the Planning Board approving them all, right?
Take away the eight and six.
A hundred, but they all have to be dealt with by the city council.
Yeah, right.
The city councillor that mentioned to me at one point, I think it was two years ago, their strong feeling that, that there should be a stipend in our position and that they were going to bring it up. It never did come up to my knowledge in the city council, and I know we're in tight budgets right now, but hey. Just mentioning.
The telecom meeting, committee had their final meeting last night.
Oh.
All excited about that. That's been going on for about two years now, so.
What does it mean that it's final?
To the mayor with all the findings that we, we came up with.
What are the findings? Can you give us a sneak preview?
It's a huge, it's a huge report, right, Harry? This was a long report. Maybe, maybe you have it available to circulate to Planning Board members?
Well, even just the executive summary, I'd love to know what you decide, if it's, if we're going with our own system.
I had it all in my, well, hopefully I didn't delete it.
Harry, Harry, somebody, tell me somebody has a copy of this thing.
I'm sure they do.
All right, well, we'll work on tracking down a copy that we can circulate so we can at least look at the executive summary. But Harry, you did it.
Quite long, actually. There's three or four things on there that were pretty interesting, I thought. You know, the meetings we had with Westfield and Holyoke and Greenfield, Salt Hadley, about the same site as us, you know, what we had.
Are you recommending we do it? I think he's going to, he's going to just tease it.
Yeah, I think we, I think they should start out with, you know, something small, see if it's going to work, and people are interested in the thing. But it's not going to be cheap. It's going to, it's going to cost, you know, a couple million bucks to get it off the ground.
Wow.
All right. Harry, I, I still remember the meeting several years ago when Tom Peak came looking for a Planning Board member, and we all twisted your arm to do it, or most of us took two steps back. So now that you've reached the end, I do want to just say thanks again. Like, I know it's been a lot of work. We all have these other boards to go to, and I, I think we all appreciate the work you did on that board.
Yeah, thank you so much, Harry.
You tell it, the CPA is, hasn't got a meeting until maybe next month.
All right.
So there's nothing going on there, I can, I can really think of.
All right.
Matter of fact, open the CPA business with Mr. Bags here.
I've been bringing a lot of stuff to CPA. Under, under the membership, I just want to, you know, give credit to Austin, because I did communicate with him, and I think we have a path to potentially move. And, and if Austin, I think, I think I'm going to try to refine the, the process, but I do think that you would put in an application and we can begin the process to move you from the associate position to the full. And I do, I agree with Jesse that I think, for now, I wasn't sure if it was an emergency appointment that the mayor could make or kind of just in the absence of the last full member, the associate member fills in. So maybe the emergency appointment isn't necessary, and we can just figure out how, if you remain, you, you express willingness, and if you remain interested to put your, put an application in to be a full member, and then we would advertise for, for a new associate member going forward.
I was once an associate member.
Yeah.
Way, way back. Look at him now. And I've been through this process, and it was basically the board voted that they wanted it to happen, and then I went to the mayor and they sort of confirmed it. And that, that's the process that we went through.
Oh, I think it has to go to the city council though, man. I don't know that we have a say in it. I think, I think just by virtue of being an associate member, whenever a full board isn't here, Austin becomes a full board member. So I think until, but I do think technically the mayor could appoint a new person to the full seat, and Austin would stay in his associate spot, but I think that.
I've expressed interest, Jeff.
Good, good. Glad to hear that.
That's excellent. You made the big time, Austin. Get ready. All right, guys. I hope your 2021 is off to a good start, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you all.
We, I'll second the motion.
Move to adjourn. Thank you.
So I, I guess, yeah, I, I seconded.
Moving to adjourn. Jim? Austin?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am a yay.
And I am a yay.
Good night, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you.